Sky, did you say we're ready?
Hey, I am listening, Dan. We are good to go.
Just tell me whenever we're ready.
We're ready, whenever you like.
Oh, okay, thanks. Great, thanks, Dan. So, uh, everybody knows tonight's the January 27th, 2021 meeting of the City VDINA Planning Commission. And, you know, in conformance with health practices and government or governors order regarding coronavirus, we're conducting it by Zoom as so many of our meetings have been now. I wonder what's going to be like when we have in-person meetings again. But tonight, in our meet, you know, in our meeting, we have one public hearing. We also have a presentation by city staff and a sketch plan which we'll talk about. People want to participate on the public hearing, there'll be an opportunity to call in. We'll give that number later. Also, one thing I wanted to share with people who only watch or participate in these things occasionally, because we are conducting these meetings remotely, there are, we have to record our votes instead of doing I or nay as a group. We have to do a roll call for everyone. And then, so you're going to see a lot of roll votes because legally, legal requirements are that we, you know, that there's very clear confirmation of what we're saying. Well, that's my lead in. And with that, we'll go to our first roll vote of the night. And that is to ask Liz Olson of the city staff to do a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Agnew?
Present.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Berube?
Here.
Chair Numrov?
And the next item on our agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes? I guess I mostly asked that to staff, but also any other commissioners. Are there any changes to our agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Kate. Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Numrov?
Aye. The next meeting, the next, excuse me, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our January 13th meeting. Are there any changes or questions to these minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted in the meeting agenda and the meeting packet.
Second.
Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Numrov?
One thing I want to add regarding, while thinking about last, our last meetings, we had technical difficulties at the end where a lot of people couldn't hear. Or actually, we could hear, but nobody could speak. If that happens, we're asked to just try to hang on a little bit. Staff will send out a chat email, a chat to all of us. You can try to give us update. And if we need to do anything, you know, if we're unable to get back on the call, then we will figure that all the time. But staff believes that they can overcome that. It's due to a, probably due to a change in the technology from the vendor of the technology. So hopefully, it's all worked out now. But with that, we come to our fifth item on our agenda at 7:07, and that is the Morningside. It's a special recognition and presentation by city staff regarding the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. I believe Ross Bitner and Jessica Wilson of the City Engineering Department are with us tonight. So here is all yours.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. And I'm going to give you some information that we shared with the neighborhood related to the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. And a little bit of background on the flood risk reduction strategy, which is a strategy document that staff, along with some consultants and volunteer, resident volunteers, helped to develop over the course of almost a year. And then last April of 2020, city council adopted that flood risk reduction strategy. So here's just a little bit of background to set the stage of what that means. In our flood risk reduction strategy, our strategy really quite simply is to comprehensively reduce flood risk for the community. And we do that through several different areas of work. Infrastructure, regulation, outreach and engagement, and emergency services. And the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project, we're really focusing in on that infrastructure area of work and outreach and engagement to provide that flood risk reduction service. Those are the strategies that we're implementing for this particular project. So how do we view risk? In our flood risk production strategy, we looked at the different factors that contribute to flood risk. And climate is a primary one, you know, how much precipitation we receive and when. Exposure is the degree to which homes, buildings, assets, infrastructure come into contact with water. So you might have several properties that are, it's kind of things like distance from the lake shore, things like that would define your exposure or your elevation in the watershed, whether you're in a high area or a low area. And then vulnerability is the degree to which assets that come into contact with floodwaters are damaged by floods. So with vulnerability, you could have a couple of properties that have similar exposure. They could be at the same elevation, for instance, but they might have varying vulnerability. So one house perhaps is, has a more modern basin and a drain tile and a sump pump. And another one, even though it's at the same elevation, might not have a drain tile and a sump pump or might have an older foundation with cracks that would be prone to like groundwater seepage flooding from that pathway. So these are the things that all play into what flood risk is for a particular property. And then through our flood risk production strategy, we also wanted to, to understand what the drivers of increasing flood risk were. And far and away, the biggest contributor to flood risk for the city of Edina, and this is not just in Edina, but statewide and nationwide, climate change is causing flood risk to worsen. That one is bolded and first because it is the most important one, the biggest driver. And then next is aging infrastructure. And in the Morningside neighborhood in particular, it was developed mostly in the 50s and 60s. So the infrastructure that's in there is getting old. And it was also designed to handle a different amount of water than we have today. Climate change has increased the amount of water that these systems are dealing with. And then we have on here well-drained landscapes and imperviousness. And these things are more historic drivers of increasing flood risk. And we were surprised, staff was even surprised for this to shake out this way where climate change and aging infrastructure are really modern drivers of increasing flood risk. Well-drained landscapes and imperviousness matter, but not as much as those other two. So how do we define flooding? And we were really, the difference between flooding and kind of a nuisance drainage issue is a little bit gray. There's not really hard lines between those two. But when we're talking about flooding, we're, we're really focused on protecting structures, primary structures, so homes and businesses. Things like sheds or detached garages or backyard low areas. Those are set aside in a different category. And we're talking about flood risk today in the Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project. We're really talking in terms of structures that are impacted. And there's a few different ways that water gets into a structure. Could be surface overflow, so water that gets into low openings and structures. It could be a window well or a door. Sanitary backflow, when the sanitary sewer is overwhelmed with water during a flood event. If that happens, if water gets into the sanitary sewer and mixes with that sewage, if it's too much for that system to handle, then water's going to back up and take that path back into the low areas, which is basements for people. And then groundwater. So if you have a vulnerable basement walls with cracks or aging system, or perhaps your sump pump fails, then groundwater seepage can cause flooding in your lower level. We did some, some extensive online engagement. This Morningside Flood Infrastructure Project has happened entirely after the restrictions for meeting in person. And so we've been doing all of our engagement through our Better Together webpage. And that's also where we're going to keep all of our, our records about the project. So if anyone could look back and see where we've been and how we got to where we are. And then also see what's coming up next. So this is from December. These are some stats from December. We're going to be updating these soon on how we're engaging with people. We've had several, we've had three virtual public meetings. We've had a couple of technical panels. We've had some socially distanced or physically distanced in-field meetings with people. We've sent out postcards. We have several interactive map tools that we've been using to reach people and social media. And I'll show you one of the cool tools that we have been using to help communicate flood risk for the neighborhood. So these are the primary concerns that we heard. Flooding experiences on individual properties. We've heard people tell us stories about floods that they've experienced and damages that they've endured. We've heard about concerns about the impacts of recent redevelopment and changes to impervious. The possibility of land acquisition, impacts of climate change, restricting construction on high-risk properties. We've heard a lot about the Weber Woods area and some of the natural resources trade-offs and opportunities there. Cost options and who pays, I'll share some of that with you today. And that interrelation and the causes of flood risk. So the reason that we're in this neighborhood, Morningside, is one of the most impacted neighborhoods for the amount of structures that are impacted by flooding. And we also have a planned street reconstruction project coming up in 2022 is those brown lines. And then 2023 is the red. And that is an opportunity to renew infrastructure. And it's a chance that you get once every about 60 years is a typical lifespan of a street. And so now is the time if we're going to make a big investment in infrastructure to do it alongside the street reconstruction project where we're already going to be there. And we can have a good opportunity to make some changes. So this is where we're at in the timeline of the project. We've done some engagement in person. I should say physically distanced in the park and then a lot of virtual meetings. Those are shown in those green flags. And then gray are those council or decision maker check-ins. And we are just wrapping up our refined concepts. So we have, that's the concept that I'll share with you today. We're, we've shared it with the neighborhood. We've shared it with the Neighborhood Association. We've shared it with the Energy and Environment Commission. In February, we'll be checking in with the Park and Recreation Commission before we check in with city council in March at a work session. And then shortly after that, we'll ask them to make a decision on our staff recommendation, which is going to incorporate all the feedback from those various groups. Then that concept, if whatever concept gets approved, is going to be passed over to the construction division. And they're going to start their design, their really detailed design for that street reconstruction project. So some goals that we had for our infrastructure project, we want to safely store and move floodwater by repairing and upgrading aging infrastructure to share benefits and risks neighborhood-wide. We looked at a handful of scenarios where we were testing things. We were testing out, you know, where we could, we could store more water on the surface, where we could store more water underground, where we could add or upsize pipes to move water more efficiently. And then various combinations of those things. We looked at predictive pumping. So pumping water out of a water body before the rain comes to make extra space. And we looked at just more efficiently conveying water over the surface. And we had five scenarios. If you looked on our engagement website, you could review each of those. None of them were a perfect option that we really liked. We, we had learned a lot from those scenarios about what was really working and providing value. And now we're taking those and we're really optimizing those as we work up our staff recommendation. We wanted to make sure that in any scenario or any option that we were going to recommend, that flood risk did not increase for anybody. And in some of our initial kind of testing of these various options, we were seeing places that would benefit and other places that would not benefit. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't increasing the risk for anyone throughout the neighborhood. So this is what we tried. We tried looking at testing pipes in different sizes and placements and alignments. Storage on the surface and underground, surface overflows, just conveying it more efficiently over the surface and, and knowing where it's going to flow versus right now where it just kind of flows in the low spaces that are, that are uncontrolled. Looking at ponds and pumping and then various combinations of those so that we could really optimize. This is a screen grab from flood risk map that we have, an interactive flood risk map. And I'll show that to you at the very end of the slides here where you could put in an address for anywhere in the city of Edina, and it would navigate you there. And you could see the, the storm drains or the catch basins, manholes, the pipes, and then the flood risk for various places during a 10-year storm or a 100-year storm. So this is the, the concept that we are, that we've landed at. We have a little bit of refining and optimizing to do before we bring that staff recommendation to our work session with council in March. But essentially, we have some storage. We're, we're really optimizing the storage option. So Weber Pond is this blue outline on the right side. Right now, it's this smaller rectangle and the concept would be to expand into this Weber Woods area. So it'd be a big tree removal project, a big excavation project to make much more surface storage there. Surface storage is one of the, the least expensive ways to see a big benefit in flood risk reduction. The other area where we would do a lot of excavation is what we're calling this Lynn Kipling inundation area. So it would be excavation and lowering of the pond there to create more surface storage. We looked at storage in a couple of other places at Avail Academy and Susan Lindgren School. And then under some, perhaps some new playing fields at Weber Park. And those didn't really work out to provide a lot of value. So that didn't make it into, that probably not can make it into our final recommendation. And then we looked at pipe options. So conveying water more efficiently and effectively and in a more controlled manner to those open storage areas that we're expanding. And notably, there's a swale here that we're adding that would help water make it more efficiently into this new storage area that we're proposing. So these blue lines show areas where we're either adding or upsizing pipes. Some of those pipe alignments already exist. They would just be, get bigger or other places where we would disconnect pipes to provide some flood risk reduction benefit. So there's varying scales of implementation here. So we have varying benefits going from good to better to best as we add more and more elements. That means the projects get bigger and bigger, and they also get more and more expensive with each option. So if we start with just the baseline foundational things, that would be surface storage is one of the, the best cost benefits for flood risk reduction benefit. So that's that expansion of Weber Park, Weber Pond through Weber Woods and this Lynn Kipling area, and then more effectively conveying water into those spaces. If we wanted to add a little bit more benefit, it's going to cost a little bit more. We would add conveyances to get more water to that space and upsize pipes to get the water there more efficiently or, or grab more areas that have water flood risk in upstream areas. We would only do that option so much so that we had the storage space to hold it. We wouldn't want to increase risk for anyone downstream by adding those before we made space to store that additional water. And then in the best option, the biggest option, the most expensive option, we can get a little bit more marginal benefit by adding storage in some of these more upstream areas. Avail Academy, Susan Lindgren School. But we see some diminishing returns there. So if we're going to look at each of these options, here's the status quo would be not to remove any structures from flood risk and not to reduce any flood risk for, for structures. And we wouldn't see any annualized benefit there. We'd still spend about $2 million just renewing the infrastructure that's already there. And flooding would, would persist. But there would be some cost savings because we wouldn't be spending the additional money to see that flood risk reduction benefit. And the good option, some structures are removed from risk. Some structures are completely removed from risk and others have a reduced risk. And I'll show you some maps here shortly where you can see where that benefit accumulates. It costs a little bit more and there's some trade-offs and opportunities. Weber Park, Weber Woods, we would definitely need to remove a lot of trees in order to make that storage space. But also Weber Park, Weber Woods could use some reinvestment. And there's some opportunities to revitalize the amenities that are there, including natural resources. In the bigger or better option, we have more structures removed or structures reduced in risk. A bigger annualized benefit costs more. Some of those trade-offs and opportunities remain the same for trees and park space, which is tree removal, but also a chance to revitalize and refresh amenities in the park spaces. We see a big opportunity for natural resources enhancement also. And then in this biggest and best option, we're seeing some diminishing returns here. There's some more structures removed, you know, one more structure that has a reduced risk, a little bit more benefit, but a lot more cost. We think that the staff recommendation, we're still doing some optimizing, but we'll fall somewhere between this good and better range. So this is what it looks like out there today. I've got a couple more slides. I'll finish up here in just a couple of minutes and then we can have some discussion on this. So this is the Morningside neighborhood. It's cut in two. And the bottom part of the neighborhood is over here to the right just because of the, the shape of the neighborhood. And then in the blue is water depth. So the darker blue, the deeper the water. And then this orange, reddish-orange bar is flood risk. So if it has a color, a light orange color, that's the lowest relative risk. And the darker the color is the higher relative risk. This is a good neighborhood-wide scale of what the flood risk and damage, potential damages would be. You know, structure by structure, we, we're not on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And, but we are sharing these maps with people and then they can call us, call us and check in about what their particular specific risk might be. So if there's particular properties here, we can always follow up with you afterwards too if you have questions about them. So this is existing conditions. We see a lot of water pooling up here on west of Weber Field here. And water generally moves from west to east during a flood event. It all is going to flow to this low area and then west-east on its way over to Weber Pond. And then there's a storm sewer pipe that takes it north and then east over to Minneapolis. So in the good option, we can model with all, with that additional storage, what we think would happen in that same event with that infrastructure improvement. And you can see in the green, those are homes that are removed from risk. And then you can see some lightening of the colors as the flood risk is reduced for those properties. So if I just kind of go back and forth, back to the existing, to what the good option benefit provides, you can see some of those structures are reduced in risk, particularly here between Grimes and Kipling. And then this is the better option. So in this better option, we make this Weber Pond even bigger. So that means even more tree removal. This Lynn Kipling inundation area is expanded. There's a swale added here through the park to more efficiently convey that water to those newly added storage areas. So more structures either removed completely from risk or a lower level of risk. You can see that this one added risk pink. We don't see any of those on the, on the map. And then the best option would be looking at Avail Academy, Susan Lindgren School, some other pipe options. Though that's probably not going to make it into our final recommendation because the, the cost was much bigger and the benefits were, we're starting to see some diminishing returns there. So this is my last slide and then I'd be happy to take any questions if we can have a little bit of discussion here. So we've been sharing some information. We've had a couple iterations of concepts that we've shared with the neighborhood and internally with, with staff and other departments. And we have our more refined concepts. We still have a little bit of optimization to do. But the elements of expanding Weber Pond and the inundation area and things like the swale, those we're going to optimize. But we feel like those elements are, are going to make it into the final recommendation. So we're shopping this around again to commissions and getting some other reactions from people as we form up our staff recommendation. And with that, I'll stop sharing my screen here. I can always bring it back if folks want to take another look at it. And then I'll take any, any questions or comments that people have.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm going to pose for questions just for a second. Jerry, I'm glad to see you have some questions. What are you particularly looking for from us? I might have some more questions later, but how, what, what, what can we, what are you looking for from the planning commission?
Yeah, so there is some, at the planning commission, I think you guys often hear variance requests for things like basements or first floors as we're, first floor elevations as we are requiring people to elevate structures. There's an intersection of land use and land use decisions and its relation to flood risk. Some of those are more historical drivers in nature, like imperviousness and well-drained landscapes. And then just kind of that land use, that parks, public space land use intersection where those parks' low spaces tend to be really good places to store floodwater. They have, they tend to be for neighborhoods that were developed in the 50s and 60s like Morningside. Kind of the last places to develop and then kind of made into parks because they weren't very good for developing as residential neighborhoods. So we see that intersection. And then also it's an opportunity, not just to store water. It's not just that we're going to have a giant lake at where a former Weber Park was. We think that's a good opportunity to layer in some co-benefits. We can do some good, we can fully utilize the space better if we can layer in stormwater benefits and then also have a chance to do some renewal of the park space.
Thank you, Jessica. I'd like to come back to that. But first, I'd like to open up to the other commissioners. Jerry, please, go, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Well, first, my confidence to city staff, that was, those are some great, great materials and slides presented. That was a very, I thought, effective presentation of the material. Perhaps one, the, the size of, we'll call it Lake Weber or the Weber Park Pond, the largest one, the one, the most easterly, the size of that thing, I, maybe, is it true that the reason, I mean, we need to hold up its water is that the water that falls in Edina, Edina needs to deal with it, right? It's not, part of this scheme is you can't just send it down the line? I mean, is that, I mean, I, I think that may help with people with why do we need a holding pond? Because the expectation, I mean, that's what you need and Edina needs to find a solution to handle it. Is that a fair description of how this planning proceeds?
Yeah, and I, I think the pond was originally intended to provide some benefit for the neighborhood for flood risk and some drainage benefit. And it was just a low area that accumulated water easily. The, the way the water moves through, it's, this is really complex for several reasons. There's, it's a tight space. There's not a whole lot of room to do a whole lot of storage. But also water crosses municipal boundaries here. So we've been talking a lot with our, our counterparts at St. Louis Park in Minneapolis to understand and better model how water how water is moving amongst the cities. Water doesn't follow those those political boundaries. And we also recognize that in Minneapolis, they are facing a lot of the same capacity and flooding issues that we are. And so we consider that as we're trying to provide some flood risk reduction benefit. We can't just ship it all downstream. We have to consider what our downstream partners are also dealing with. So it's a, it's a careful balance of of making space for water before we just send that risk on on elsewhere.
Yeah, thank you. And just, just one last comment and you can address it or maybe it'll come up down the line. There was, it was kind of like the decision timeline and the city council will need to make decisions about that. Perhaps just what, what kind of decision will the council be making shortly? I mean, like picking one of these and saying this is our budget target or something like that? Is that, that's the kind of decision they're making?
Yep. So we are going to ask them to make concept level decision about what elements to include. We knew that the street reconstruction project was coming up and that we typically would start the May in the year prior to do that design. We started this infrastructure concept process way in advance of that. So we could say, okay, how are we going to handle flooding before we even start to get into the detailed design of this street project? So we're going to ask city council, you know, things, for example, we could say, we, we really think expanding Weber Pond to, you know, about this size. That's, that's what we're recommending to achieve this benefit. Is that an element that we should move forward or not? Should we make it bigger or should we make it not quite as big? And that's the decision we're going to ask council to make is first, do you like these elements? Bigger Weber Pond, deeper Kipling, Lynn Kipling inundation area, swale. And then how big should each of them be? Because we can, we can kind of shrink or expand them a little bit based on on things like cost and and benefit. And that's the decision we're going to ask council to make. They're going to, it's at that concept level and then our, our design team is going to take those those elements and work them into their detailed design.
Yeah, we're basically asking, is the cost worth the benefit? And is now the time to build it? The next chance we have is 60 years from now. So the train's leaving the station soon. We want to make sure we get the decision right.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have questions or comments? Hi, Jimmy Bennett, Commissioner Bennett.
I just, I just have a comment. I thought that was an exceptional delivery of some complex information that I think the community at large would normally dismiss or not understand or not really care about. So just kudos to you guys for taking something complex and delivering it visually and in an understandable way for the community because that's, that's a lot of the things we get is, hey, the city isn't letting us know this, you know, you know, keeping information hostage or whatever, but it seemed very well contained and express. So it's good to see that there's going to be some nice solution there in the future for those residents and I could see most of them having some ownership in the process and thereby, you know, supporting whatever ends up being the best recommendation to the council. So good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Bennett. Anyone else? Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I just, you know, following up with what everyone else has just said, that excellent presentation. I, I followed everything. I'm usually I usually get confused, you know, starting to watch, you know, look at those maps and I think it's, it was an excellent presentation and you know, I, I just kudos again to, you know, thinking ahead to taking advantage of the reconstruction of the roadway and the infrastructure. So it'll be interesting to see what the city determines. Of course, I love Weber Park. You know, so I'm sure you're getting that too from a lot of the residents where you're just like, oh, those trees don't touch them. But you know, I think you have to look at that big picture. I guess one of my other question, you know, one of the, the main reasons is climate change, right? That you pointed out. Are you also, I mean, I know this is focused on the Morningside neighborhood, but are we also trying to? I don't know, address the climate change with other, is that too big of a question? I don't know, you know, it just seems like we can build more infrastructure, larger ponds and all of that to address, you know, what else can the city be doing to maybe alleviate that?
Yeah, and, and we a question for some other time, but I'll give you my, my 22nd answer, which is we, we think that infrastructure is a really powerful tool for delivering some of that flood risk reduction benefit. But we also through kind of this flood risk reduction strategy learn, you know, outreach and engagement is a really important strategy. If people at least can understand their own risk, then they can take action on their own to reduce their own exposure or vulnerability. So there's a whole bunch of resources on our flooding webpage and things we've developed that spurred off of that effort. An interactive map. So what is my flood risk map? That I invite you all to take a look at and look at your property and your neighbor's property and tell your neighbor about it. And then regulation is another one, you know, with our redevelopment standards, those properties that are really low, when they redevelop, we're going to require that they, they elevate. So I think we're using a variety of approaches, but it's, it's certainly not going to be fast. Will it be able to keep up with climate change? I, I, I don't think anyone could, could assert that. So I think the Climate Action Plan that the Energy and Environment Commission and the Sustainability Manager are kicking off really, really soon is going to be another opportunity to say, what did we learn from this flood risk production strategy? And how do we bring that into this adaptation and resilience plan? So I think, I think there's, I'm hopeful.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's another great response. Thank you. And I, it is good to hear that, you know, all the different groups are working together. So thank you so much. Really excited that you're doing this.
Anyone else, any other commissioners? Ms. Wilson, wonderful, as always, just a wonderful presentation. I had a few questions. So, I mean, it's kind of a comprehensive plan and it's, you know, there's, there's some trade offs if you think that's what you used. You know, Commissioner Olson talked about removal of trees and I'm not right. It's something you're talking about like buying out people's houses. Is that correct or no?
We are, we are only working in public spaces, public right of way, easement areas. We're, we're, we are not suggesting acquisition.
Okay, I, I, that one slide with little green, I thought those were, places where houses were standing today.
No, no, that, that map was showing areas where the risk was removed. So not, not like houses being removed. And I, thanks for bringing that up because I hadn't thought of it in that way when, when I was saying, you know, removed, it wasn't that the structure was being removed. It's that the risk that that structure was exposed to has been diminished such that it's no longer a risk.
Oh, removed from the risk list.
Removed from risk, yes. And I, I think, thank you for bringing that up so I could realize how we were talking about it and that might be confusing.
Thank you. I mean, that might just be me. I know, I know I've got at least one person that's enjoying my comedy routine on the call here.
To the first question, there, there is about four to six acres of tree removal in the Weber Woods area under the varying size of options. So it is significant. And as Commissioner Olson said, we are hearing about that and I think we're happy to hear more.
Would there be a plan to replace those trees elsewhere in the city or elsewhere in those areas?
I don't think we could compensate for all the trees that would be removed. It would be a significant removal. At, as it stands right now, there's a lot of we've, we've kind of joked about this, Ross and I, where it's, it's not a really great quality of forest. So we joke that it's kind of like telling someone that their, their child is ugly when you tell them that their, their really beloved space of Weber Woods, it's not a super great quality natural area. So we think if we were going to do some, some tree removals there and we're in that space, what a great opportunity to enhance the natural resources in that area. And I think over the last five or six years, we've had a lot of good examples in practice in restoring natural areas, Braymar Golf Course, the Academy Nine and the 18 hole course, great examples. Lake Cornelia Shoreline, other places where we're really reinvesting and enhancing those natural areas so that they're not just cottonwood weed trees or buckthorn with bare ground underneath. So although there would be a less tree canopy in exchange for a bigger pond, we think we could do a lot of reinvestment and renewal of the natural resources there too.
Thanks. And then one final question. I mean, you discussed, you know, different tactics you're taking with when people come in to build something and you're going to have different requirements. Are there things that we should be thinking about? You know, we, you know, we get a lot of houses that say like, we want to lift the first floor up higher because of the flood plain. Are there other things, and I think we're going to be looking later in the year, hopefully sooner than later, at an impervious surface ordinance. Are there different standards we should be applying to houses that are within these certain areas? You know, and, and as a little background, may, you know, I know like, for example, in the, in the neighborhood we're talking about, there's a lot of concern about bigger houses creating concerns and taking down trees and and perhaps increasing the flooding. I mean, is, are those things we should be thinking about on a neighborhood by neighborhood or or, or, or on a qualitative basis such as, you know, the types of zone, flood potential in the zone you're living in? Or should we be thinking about micro-targeting some of our regulations in that regard or our practices?
So we have some, some policies about minimum elevations for, for buildings when they're, they're brand new or or additions. That's in our Conference of Water Resources Management Plan. We are doing a major amendment right now to incorporate all this that we've learned about flood risk reduction and incorporate our strategy. So I think we've got some of those policies. We're really fleshing those out right now. So you will know more about those as those get to a point where we're ready to, to incorporate them into code. Your question about impervious cover. And you and, and the commission and Ross probably know a little bit more about the status of that. But as far as how much does impervious matter? Is that really like the first thing that we should tackle when it comes to flood risk reduction? It matters less than, than we thought. So when we looked at some sensitivity analyses where we say, all right, if we're going to take impervious cover that we have now and we're going to just say increase it by, you know, 10% or decrease it by 10%, how much does that matter? How, how much benefit or increase in risk would we see in flooding? Well, if we looked at a 25% reduction in impervious, it really didn't make a whole lot of difference in reducing that flood elevation for people. And 25% reduction in impervious, that's, that's massive. Every house, every sidewalk, every driveway, every street shrinking by 25%. And it really barely moved the needle. And that was before we even considered the increased risk of climate change making things worse in the future. So impervious cover, while that really matters for like neighborhood character and, and green space and, and trees and just kind of what it feels like to walk through a neighborhood that has those, those, you know, trees and green space. Those things are important and impervious. Managing impervious can help with that. When it came to seeing a big benefit and reducing flood risk by managing impervious, we didn't really, it didn't really show up, at least in the Morningside neighborhood that's fully developed already. Where a lot of those decisions about imperviousness and connecting areas, those decisions have already been made and we can't unmake them. In an outstate community that is just starting out, that doesn't have fully built neighborhoods, that might be more of an opportunity. But in the city of Edina, a lot of that, that ship has sailed, so to speak. You know, for a flood risk production benefit, there's still plenty of other reasons why you might implement an impervious limit. But to say that you're doing it for primarily a flood benefit, we, we didn't see it.
Ms. Wilson, just outstanding work. Mr. Bittner, Ms. Wilson, do you have anything further? Any other commissioners? Do you have any questions or comments? Anyone? Commissioner Bennett?
I just have one thing. Memory is kind of jogged from some of the other comments. I mean, I'm sure most of us have been back to Weber Woods and although it's not ideal, it is a very natural feel because, you know, the paths are just rugged and there's just trees and people are just wandering around. And so it has this kind of intimate vibe with nature that is rare in Edina. So I really do believe strongly that whatever we do, you really, really take the neighborhood's input when it comes to revitalizing or planning out what that experience will come to look like. It looked like there was like a crossing over the water potentially. And then just in the spirit of Edina, like looking to the vision Edina to help fill in the blanks. So one thing that comes to mind is, you know, we're a community of learning. So you know, having educational pieces as part of it or around it, you know, help kind of be that final touch of all this engagement you're doing now. You kind of already have it ready to go, but yeah, I, I could see that as the biggest pushback because there are a lot of people that are back there and like the natural feel. So if all that's gone to water, you can't really use it in the summer, but maybe there's some planning that could be used around winter use when it's frozen. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. And I'll just mention too that we have heard from people, it is a really beloved place. And so we want to make sure that we can keep that connection for people and they really love the trails and, and dog walking and, and it gets heavily used. So we are thanks for reiterating that comment and just letting you know, we've, we've heard that from the neighborhood as well.
From my perspective, and I'm not a scientist, but this is just, I mean, there are, we are going to be facing painful trade offs to deal with climate change, unfortunately. Just likely to happen. That seems what's going to happen unless there's, you know, science comes up with something great, you know, carbon capture or, you know, but I, I, it seems hard to avoid. Anyone else? Otherwise, thank you. Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, and that takes us to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And Ms. Acker, Assistant Planner for the City will present on a variance request for 5844 Fairfax Avenue.
Thank you. Subject property is located at 5844 Fairfax. There are two variances that are being requested, a .37 foot side guard setback variance, which is along the north side and a 9.85 foot side street setback variance, and that would be along south side of the property. The property is located in the northwest corner of Fairfax Avenue and West 59th Street. It consists of a brambler with a detached two car garage. Garage loads off of West 59th Street. House faces Fairfax. This is a survey of the existing home as it exists today. It has a 4.63 foot side guard north setback, which the minimum side guard setback is five feet. So they're just slightly over into the required setback area. Now along the south side, there's a 5.15 foot side street setback. The side street setback that's required is 15 feet. So they're, you know, close to 10 feet into the required setback. Homeowners are proposing to the second story above the home. Really is no change to the building footprint with the exception of a small porch that's going out the front that does conform to the ordinance's requirements. Existing garage will remain the same. So there isn't going to be a first or a second floor addition into the rear yard at all. This is the existing main floor and the proposed main floor. The really, the only change is that front porch will be reconfiguring all of the interior spaces. And then the new second floor. So the existing home is non-conforming. It's always been non-conforming. It was built in 1952. There were no variances required at the time. The ordinances have changed. So the conditions have remained all these years are not self-created in terms of what the applicant would like to do within the footprint. It is a result of the fact that ordinances have changed and that now houses that have been conforming that ordinances have changed and that now the house that had been conforming at the time that it was constructed is now considered non-conforming. So this is the new front elevation of the home. Everything else about plan conforms to the ordinance's requirements. The maximum overall height for the building allowed is 30 feet, and this is under the 30-foot maximum. It's, I believe, 29 feet 8 inches. This is the south elevation. So this would be that side street setback view along the street. And then rear elevation, which is the west elevation and the north elevation. So you're looking through the home to the north at this view of the house. So this is an illustration of the existing conditions with the homes to the north and then also the home that is behind subject property. That home is directly behind or to the west of the subject property. You'll notice has a very similar side street setback. So this isn't a unique condition within the neighborhood. There are a number of homes that also have those non-conformities. You'll also notice that the home to the north is very close to the north lot line. There's a driveway between the south wall of the home to the north and the south lot line. So the spacing between two homes will remain the same. Here's a street view of the corner, looking at the front of the house. You can see the neighbor to the north and the driveway that they have between the two properties. A little better view of the front. And then to the side along West 59th Street, this whole backyard area will remain the same. We aren't adding on anything to the back of the house. So the upper view is the east elevation study showing some of the homes that are along the street, the home that's directly adjacent. You can see the spacing between the subject home and the home to the north is quite generous. And then the lower view is the street view along West 59th Street. Again, spacing between structures will remain the same. So these are a few of the examples of homes that are along 5800 Park of Fairfax Avenue that have been rebuilt, that may have a similar look or similar flavor to what homeowners are proposing. And then these are, as you go along, down along West 59th Street, you'll see a number of homes that have been rebuilt or extensively remodeled. So the primary issue is the request reasonable? Are there difficulties complying with the code, the proposed use? Are there practical difficulties with providing a conforming solution? The proposed use is permitted in the R1 dwelling district. It complies with all the zoning standards with the exception of the existing non-conforming north yard and south side street setback. Those will continue. They are not asking to reduce the setbacks. They're just going to be maintaining them. They will be going up to the second floor with those non-conforming setbacks. The practical difficulty is caused by the proposed addition not being able to maintain those non-conforming setbacks. To the north, it's just a minor point intrusion, but to the south, I mean, that's almost a 10-foot inset for that second floor, which really drastically reduces their opportunity for expansion. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property? The home, while it was non-conforming, it was conform, it is now non-conforming. It was conforming when it was built in 1952. And this was not a self-created situation. It, over time, has been as a result of the ordinance's changing. And will the variances alter the essential character of the neighborhood? Granting the variances should not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The additions will match the existing home setback on the first floor. All other aspects of the project do conform. The overall height is within the limits. It is well within the lot coverage limits. Typically, we will see additions. And most of the time, with either a tear-down rebuild or an addition to a home, property owners are maximizing their coverage. In this instance, they're not really adding any square footage to the footprint. The homeowners have owned the property since 2014, and so this is their opportunity to expand the home that they've owned for quite some time. Staff does recommend approval of the variances, 8.37 foot and a 9.85 foot side street setback variance for that existing non-conforming home, subject to the plans that were submitted and the survey date stamped December 22, 2020, and compliance with the conditions and comments of the environmental engineer's memo, which was quite brief because they're really not impacting anything on the property or changing anything. So with that, I will stop. The builder, Robyn Stats, with Nextdoor Remodels is present, and also the homeowners, Sean and May Delary, I hope I got that right, are also present. And I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Acker. At this stage of the meeting, it's just opportune for the planning commission to ask questions of city staff. Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Acker? Okay, well, okay, chance later. So then, with no questions, that would be the opportunity for Mr. Stats or the homeowners, if they'd like to give a presentation. You don't have to, but here's an opportunity if you'd like.
No, I just want to thank Chris for covering the details. I think she did a great job. My name is Sorry, this is Robyn with Nextdoor Models. I'm the owner. I'm the general contractor. So yeah, I just want to thank Chris and Liz and their staff for helping me kind of through this process. I think the only thing I would mention is that Sean, we did send out neighborhood letters prior to the meeting and prior, hopefully prior to them being notified of the variance request. And he did receive support from, in writing, from a number of the, a number of those neighbors, including the one directly adjacent to the north. And I think they may have been part of your packet or posted online. But yeah, other than that, again, just thanks for having us and thanks to Chris for covering, making my job easy.
Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, Rob. Quickly, I think when I saw the property to the north, that property line that is their driveway, I mean, is the driveway a butt up against the property we're talking about? So the property immediately north of the subject property, that's where the driveway is, is on that lot line?
Yeah.
That's correct. Okay, that's what I thought I saw. Thank you.
The commissioner have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, so that, this is, this is a public hearing portion of our meeting. So members of the community can also comment on this matter by calling in if they like. If anyone's watching and like to participate, give some testimony, they can dial 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 3089756 and press star 1. It's 3089756 and star 1. You can place into queue. City staff will let you on the call when you're, when you have time, when you're available, or you're ready, when we're ready. Excuse me, get that right the third time. You'll have up to three minutes and staff will let you know when you're hitting the three minutes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan, and I don't, I don't see Scott's even on. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you. Can you let us know if anyone wants to say anything?
Sure. Thank you. As of right now, we do not have anyone on the call. I would advise that we wait a moment or so to see if anyone does call in. There's a delay. I've got 8:02, so if we want to wait till 8:03, I think that'll work. I've got 8:03. We have no one on the call, so I think we can go ahead and go forward.
Okay. So at this point, we would ask if anyone would like to close the public hearing. Could we get a motion for that?
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brubie?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Namrab?
And so now that, now this stage of the presentation or the item, would be the opportunity for planning commissioners to discuss this matter. If they have any further questions, they can still ask them with staff or the applicant, or someone could make a motion if they like. So Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I just, I just want to comment, this is, at least to me, pretty straightforward. A responsible proposal that's well-vetted by the neighbors, resourceful in the standpoint of their maintaining same footprint, very little environmental impact from that standpoint, too. So, I mean, I applaud them doing all they can to just, you know, keep it as resourceful as possible. It's just, you know, they didn't create the circumstance that's non-conforming. So in my opinion, I support this fully and wish them the best of luck.
Do any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Wish to make a motion? Commissioner Bennett, do you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the variance based off of the conditions and findings in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to approve this variance, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Ignu?
Aye.
Commissioner Brubie?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Namrab?
Aye. So it's approved, and I wish everyone best of luck on behalf of the whole commission. Thank you for being before us tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, now that takes us to the end of our public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And now we go to a sketch plan where a developer brings a possible project and just gets kind of our feedback before any kind of vote, which could occur later. So for tonight, we're reviewing a plan for 4660 77th Street West. The city's community development director, Carrie Teague, will present on behalf of the city. All yours, Carrie.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, I'm going to share my screen here. Is that showing up? Okay. So this, this sketch plan proposal is located in Pentagon Park. It's on the north side of 77th Street, south of the old Fred Richards Golf Course, where the regional trail comes through the site. This property is guided in our comprehensive plan for office and residential uses. The density range here is between 25 and 75 units an acre for residential. Sorry about that. The property is zoned MDD 6. So this zoning district was, the site was rezoned back in 2007, 2008, I guess was the final resolution. At that time, it also included the Pentagon Park South. This property right here on the south side of 77th. There was also, when this was rezoned to MDD 6, there was an overall development plan that was attached to that zoning. And what you're seeing on the screen is that, is that overall development plan. This was before the city had a PUD ordinance. So the idea with this project was to, on the, for the south side, to build a hotel, a couple of office buildings, and a couple of parking ramps. And for the north side of 77th, it was to be residential with the idea of potentially a continuum of care. There was an assisted living contemplated on the north end. So it was, this was contemplated as a mixed use, not necessarily vertically, but a horizontal mixed use type of development. At that time, that was when the economy didn't cooperate back in 2008, and none of this happened. Fast forward to 2014, the property was reacquired by the current property owner, and they pursued a rezoning. And there was a preliminary rezoning to PUD for both sites that moved into a proposal for the south side of 77th. It was ultimately approved for a PUD. So that was pulled out of the MDD 6 zoning classification. And the north side of 77th was also considered for a separate PUD, and that was to be housing. This is a look at that overall plan that was contemplated back then. However, that was denied by the city council. So ultimately, we're really, we're starting over. There's no PUD for the sites. But we do have this overall development plan and the existing zoning of MDD 6, which contemplated residential uses on the site. So what the applicant is proposing here is to do a five to six-story residential development. That previous proposal, it was considered, the residential proposal in 2017 and 18 was five stories. So this is, it's pretty similar, five. It steps back away from the park with the taller, the taller pieces of the building closer to 77th. There would be 404 housing units. So that would be at the top end of that 75 units per acre as outlined in the comprehensive plan. They are suggesting a pedestrian connection from 77th to the park. The region, this is the regional trail you can see moving through the park today. So it's important to, for this project to embrace the park, provide those connections. One thing to consider that the planning commission could discuss, and this was discussed in Mick Johnson's review, potentially having an additional connection on the west side of the site. I'll let the applicant go through some of the more, the more details of the project or the building itself. So what they would be looking for is some flexibility to the height standards, five to six stories. This is currently zoned for four stories, 48 feet. Some flexibility on the floor area ratio, this is at 1.5. And some flexibility in regard to parking spaces. They're looking at about 1.27, 1.3 spaces per unit here. They have indicated that they do intend to comply with the city's affordable housing policy. So that would be determined as the process moves along, potentially with a formal application. Ultimately, that has to be decided at the time of a, any final approval on the site. So it could be potential buy-in, they could provide the units on the site, or potentially a combination of, a combination of those two. So what they're seeking would be a rezoning from that MDD 6 to PUD that would allow for that, some of that flexibility that I talked about before. And that PUD also enables the city to ensure the affordable housing. So some of the discussion topics for the planning commission, as you go through the sketch and provide feedback. Comments on the density, it is at the top of the range. Connections from 77th to the park, and how this, this project fits into the area. As, as indicated by Mick Johnson in his review, the thought of bringing housing to this area kind of revitalizes the area and gets more activity on the trail. Consider the heights that are proposed here, and the city engineer is suggesting Uh, uh, consider the, the heights that are proposed here, and the, uh, the city engineer is suggesting some green roofs, um, that in, um, providing some of that sustainability, uh, that we're looking for in project. So with that, I will stop there, answer any questions you may have at this time, otherwise, the, uh, the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Do any commissioners have, Commissioner Strauss, do you have a question, question for the, Mr. Teague?
Yes, yes, I do, thank you. Commissioner, um, Senator Teague, the, the parking variance, that they're, I mean, with the, on the, your, your table showing what the parking requirements are, what they were providing, how would those numbers compare, I'm thinking of our earlier discussion tonight, with how we would evaluate it with a proposed ordinance change, would that?
Uh, yeah, so we, yeah, good question. So they were, we were considering a one point two five parking stalls uh, per unit in that revised ordinance, so this plan would actually be code compliant with that draft ordinance.
That was a nice question. Any other commissioners with questions? Well, with that, we, we, I'd like to invite the applicant to tell us more about your project, then we can have a discussion with, between the applicant and the commissioners after that. Who will be presenting for the applicant?
Hi, I am, uh, I'm Kurt Gunsbray, I'll, I'll start our presentation, thanks. I hope I said your name correctly.
And it's all yours, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Well, hello commissioners, and thank you for including us in your meeting tonight. Um, I've got several team members here, uh, including Christina Smitten, uh, Jason Lord, and Mike Critch, and George Johnson, um, designers and development partners. We are Solheim and BKB and Hillcrest. Hillcrest is the current owner of the site, and Solheim is working with Hillcrest to develop the site, and BKB is the architect and designer. Um, we, uh, Solheim, and I'm gonna just share a quick screen here, just to make things more interesting than my face, in the middle of the evening here. Um, we are a twin cities-based company. Uh, we've built over two thousand apartments in the last ten years in the twin cities. Um, our brand promise is that we build beautiful, sustainable communities that people love, and we're very much about sustainability, and it was fun to hear Jessica's discussion about, um, flood management, but also about climate change and just the impacts that it's having on construction. Um, we're, we're very much aware of these things and very much build, uh, ideals into our projects that, uh, look forward to where we're gonna be in the future, so, um, uh, we, we specialize in creating really memorable buildings in complex locations where others have struggled before us. And as Carrie presented, this site has been through multiple iterations in the past, you know, fifteen, twenty years. Um, clearly a struggling site in that regard. Hillcrest has, in the past few years, uh, managed to turn around, refurbish, and repopulate, uh, several of the buildings in Pentagon Park, the majority of the buildings. Um, but these, these last couple are definitely, uh, I think the hardest nuts to crack, especially given what's happening in the office market right now with COVID. Um, we've, uh, we've worked with Hillcrest in the past to revitalize really great urban locations like Pentagon Park, and we look forward to doing so on this site. Um, I'm gonna unshare my screen now, if I can figure out how to do that.
Gunsbray, you're on, you're on mute right now.
Thank you, I figured out the unshare, but then I went to mute. Um, I'm gonna hand over to Christina now, who's gonna talk a little bit about Hillcrest's history, and, um, do you want to take it from there, Christina?
Thank you, Kurt, and Chair Nemirov, planning commissioners, city staff. Thank you for letting us be here this evening to share this proposal with you. Again, I'm Christina Smitten with Hillcrest Development, um, and we thought it would be beneficial if I just took a couple minutes to provide additional context. Director Teague, thank you for that intro, I think you covered the history really well. Um, but just wanted to walk you quickly through a couple pieces specific to the Pentagon Park, parts of the property. So in the purple in this slide, that is Pentagon Village, to help orientate you a little bit. The turquoise is a single-story office building. Uh, moving on to the next slide, Mike, we'll bring this in a little closer. The orange area is the Solheim proposed housing redevelopment, and that is the buildings that we refer to as forty-six forty and forty-six sixty, which are vacant. The red area includes seven buildings that we've significantly invested in over the last couple years for commercial use into the long term. And Mike, if you wanna, I think it's Mike driving now, maybe it's Kurt, I'm not quite sure. So we've made these, uh, exterior improvements to, again, those buildings, those seven buildings, the parking areas, common patio areas throughout the property. Um, we've made, Mike, if you want to keep going and just kind of flip through these, the entrances of the commercial buildings have been improved. We've made interior amenity spaces, um, we have training rooms, interior bike racks and showers. The tenant improvements have really modernized the spaces for commercial purposes. And then I think the next slide shows our, a sun deck that is in, uh, what we refer to as forty-five seventy, or forty-five fifty building. This is an interior, exterior lounge area for our tenants in a common space. So you can see, commissioners, that we've, we have really made, uh, significant investment in those, um, seven buildings, but these two, as Kurt alluded to, are vacant, and we think the housing proposal that'll, you'll learn more about tonight, is a very compatible use with our commercial use, as well as with the future Fred, Pentagon Village, and really all of West Seventy-7th. So with that, Kurt, I'll turn it back to you, and commissioners, I will obviously stay on, so if there's questions later, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Um, so questions we've been asked recently are why is Solheim interested in this site? And, um, just wanted to kind of talk you through our rationale, what's, what, uh, makes this exciting for us. And also acknowledge, just to start with, this is truly a sketch plan. We intentionally came with, um, uh, it's a relatively undeveloped, uh, images for, uh, for you to see tonight. Um, we are planning to go forward with the PUD, as Carrie has discussed, and we're excited to be neighbors with the existing Pentagon Park, uh, properties. We see housing as a complementary use in the area, which has also been pointed out by the city's consultant. And we really see enormous opportunities to connect uses, as was originally envisioned in, you know, in the multiple plans that have been put forth. And we're very confident that we can make meaningful connections, uh, for future residents at our development, and for the people who are currently working at and near and around Pentagon Park. Um, we're, and we're planning to include a bridge over the creek, um, one or two trail access points, uh, into the park area, uh, quasi-public access, uh, for all, for, for bikes, runners, et cetera. And we're also looking at developing a, an area on the west side of our site, which we'll talk a little bit more about later when, uh, Mike takes over the helm. Um, let's see, the use of the already improved Pentagon Park, as Christina describes, uh, it's already well-understood at this point. Um, the, the FAR, the setbacks, the height, are really conforming with the guidance from city staff and consultants. Uh, I don't think we're, uh, asking for anything really crazy here or outlandish, and in fact, I think what we're really doing is directly answering the requests of, uh, city planners to build something that fits well here. Um, we are planning to work within the guidelines of the Greater Southdale District Plan, which I think many of you folks have worked very hard on, um, and which is really pretty amazing in the way it's coming to fruition. And, um, we'll, uh, talk a little bit more about what Mick Johnson put forward in his letter, but um, of particular interest, I think, for the commissioners is the question about how do we address the, what we see as a tension between, between delivering enough parking and still keeping really great green space that connects with the park. I think we've come up with a really innovative plan that addresses the potential structural issues that come with the soils, as well as the very high water table in this location. Uh, virtually all of our parking is, uh, enclosed parking. Uh, we're gonna be eliminating an enormous area of asphalt and surface, surface lots, and putting it indoors, and at the same time, I guess exposing the earth back to nature, which, um, it's missed for, you know, sixty-some years. Uh, as we discussed with parking, or as Carrie discussed, uh, we're gonna be within your future guidelines. We, and additionally, as far as sustainability goes, we frequently don't talk about it enough, but it's very much just part of what we do. We build our buildings to lead gold standards. Uh, we have done LEED certification in the past and achieved gold. The first multifamily building in the state that was LEED gold certified. And, um, however, LEED isn't necessarily a good marketing tool for us. Uh, people really expect it, as they should, and we see it as an added expense. We don't intend to pursue LEED certification, but we do intend to build our building uh, within those guidelines. We have extensive, uh, experience with, uh, managing renewables. Uh, we've built over six megawatts of solar in the state that serves about three thousand homes in the state of Minnesota. Um, we have solar on existing property, and, uh, we're not sure it works well here, which I think we can discuss that later. But we're really enthusiastic about the idea that, uh, we can build extremely sustainable housing here that has a relatively low carbon footprint. Uh, our average unit size is, will be a little bit smaller than typical, which means our project will be very affordable, uh, and will realistically, uh, land in what you would call the naturally occurring affordable housing rent zone of approximately eighty percent AMI, uh, for most of our apartments. And if you're not familiar with, uh, the AMI rule, a hundred percent would be average, eighty percent would be literally, uh, kind of, uh, bottom end of middle class. So, super affordable housing for Edina, which clearly needs affordable housing. Um, let's see, beyond that, um, I just want to be, uh, clear that we're really excited about this site. It's a great, uh, fit for where we are right now as a company. We think it's a really great fit for Edina, and we're excited just to be presenting a project to Edina. Um, with that, I'm gonna put myself on mute because I have a dog and family who you can probably hear in the background. Um, and I'm gonna hand the baton over to Mike. Mike, do you have the baton? Uh, Mike, you might be on mute. Okay, guys, I think this is one of those, uh, Zoom moments.
Mike, if you are having a hard time, um, no one can hear you at this moment, if you want to try again, we'll do that, and if we can't hear you, we'll have you call in.
We've all had these moments, so. You're in good company.
This is awkward entertainment, right?
Mike, if you'd like to open up your WebEx invitation that you received, there is a call-in number on that in which you can just call in and use your audio separately. And if that doesn't work, we will go from there.
Where's the Jeopardy music?
Kurt, this is where you have to bring up your dog.
Um, I, you can, you can hear her, she's, uh, definitely, she's bold, she's in the background.
Oh, yeah, I do hear.
Her name is Tula. And she guards us every night. I'm gonna put myself on mute, this is embarrassing.
I should mention, to anyone, this happens often, so don't worry. I'll check my emails, and if he's not able to connect with audio, we will go from there.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I, I apologize, I am not quite sure what happened there. Um, I will try to share again. And hopefully there's no echo or anything, but there might be a delay. Can everybody hear me?
I'm good.
Yes.
We can hear you, Mike.
Okay, so I will try again. Again, I, I, uh, regret that that happened, I apologize. Um, I'm gonna try to bring back some excitement again here, and again, sorry for the delay. Good evening, uh, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Mike Critch, I'm a partner and architect with BKB. Then, uh, I've been with that group for over thirty-two years, uh, doing, uh, specializing in multifamily and mixed-use projects. Um, uh, we're very excited to be here tonight, um, and to continue to build on Edina's legacy of great projects. Um, I personally had the privilege to work on some of those in and around your city. Uh, more recently, the one Southdale place at, uh, Southdale Mall. And then in the, in a, a little more distant path, the Edina City Hall and Police Facility, I, I was a, a, a lead designer in, in those facilities. And, um, again, we're very excited to be here, uh, tonight. So, what you're seeing on the screen here is just the way we like to start out with our projects, and again, as Kurt said, um, we're in very much a sketch mode, we're, we're not coming with preconceived notions, we really want to try to understand what it is that your city is about in this particular area, and this, this particular site happens to be in the uh, Greater Southdale District, as you all know. And we want to take the time to really understand that. And some of those district goals that we find that are intriguing and that are important to uh, pay attention to and try to, uh, bolster is the idea of, uh, some of these that are on the screen, creating unique experiences, creating pattern and connectivity, um, really understanding what's appropriate for scale and form. Um, how would, how do we create great placemaking? We're gonna be creating an, an environment and a residence for people to live, work and play, and we want to make sure that this is a respectable home for people to live in. Um, as Kurt talked about, the idea of sustainability and resilience is very important with this particular site, and so, uh, you know, we're reading through these items to make sure that we're fitting in with what the goals are. Um, with this particular site itself, um, the issues of being connected, being integrated, being pedestrian-friendly are all very important elements, uh, for, for how we're approaching this site. This is, this was our chart in, uh, trying to understand how we fit in with the zoning. Um, frankly, I think Carrie did an excellent job in presenting the project and the zoning, as well as uh, Kurt did in terms of how we're wanting to try to fit in, and we're basically in alignment, um, with, with the future goals of the comp plan. And so, um, I think, I'm not necessarily gonna spend any time on this, I think there's a little bit of clarity. We had developed the plan a little bit, and We had developed the plan a little bit and there's a few discrepancies on the setback. Not a big deal because this is still going to push and pull. But we have about fifty-five feet at our front yard setback, which is still within the limits. The side yards were at twenty-five feet minimum on the east side. And then our building cascades back, so it steps back from twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet to forty-five feet. And then on the west side, we're actually, we have a greater setback of forty-five feet. And then it continues to cascade even further. So there's, there's plenty of room on that side as well. And then at the park side, we're at about thirty-eight feet. So that's just a clarifying point. One thing with the parking that we'll describe a little more, but we think our parking fits with the nature of this project. And typical of a lot of the projects we do around similar suburban sites like this, we're typically finding that one parking stall per bedroom is a really good ratio to have. Along with, we're providing some additional guest parking as well. But what I think that we're trying to do and what that illustrates is, and it kind of shows up in these two diagrams below. The first diagram on the left is the current existing condition. And you can see that the majority of site is mostly asphalt and building roofs and very impermeable. And we're looking to bring the site to a much more sustainable, permeable wave. And you can see that with the amount of green space and open space. And, and the way we're doing that is by placing the parking underneath the building and trying to maintain that as much as possible underneath the footprint to allow the courtyards and surroundings of the building to be actually permeable spaces. So that's one of the things that we're really trying to focus on. I'm going to skip ahead here. One of the, and my computer is also probably a little slow here, so I apologize for that as well. The big idea here, as we look at the context of this building, is again, there's, there's a lot of hardscape surfaces around here. And we thought this was important to understand. And we look to this project here that we're doing to mitigate some of that and really embrace some of the other assets that can be part of the future of this area. And the, the main diagram shows this illustration of really embracing and connecting with the park and really trying to reevaluate and redesign how these buildings that we design fit in and actually reshape some of the edges and areas along here. And so the, that hand sketch diagram illustrates three key components that we're, we're looking at for this site as we go further along and design the project. One is really enhancing that West Seventy-seventh Street east-west connection and making that much more pedestrian friendly. A second critical element is being able to get to the park from West Seventy-seventh. So creating real strong pedestrian connections from Seventy-seventh up to the park. And then thirdly is the park itself and embracing that. And the way we're thinking about that is expanding and bringing that park into our development. And so those are some of the key big elements that, that we're trying to fold into this. This site is just more of a blow-up plan of the form of the project. And again, we looked at a number of iterations. And again, this is still in sketch form, but we're, we're arriving at something more like this where the orientation in building massing and height is really important in terms of how we're thinking about this, where we fold in and bring in that park space. And so we're bringing, we're creating a project that's basically a U shape that's in three segments. And we're, we're breaking that where they connect to break down the scale of this. But as, as we, and we have most of our heights along West Seventy-seventh. That's where we have six stories. And even along West Seventy-seventh, we're looking to figure out how we break up that facade so it's not such a long facade. And again, we're in the fledgling stages of that. But we have the ends of these, ends of the massing at the moment stepping out closer and then the building steps back. And along West Seventy-seventh, we then also have our drop-off here where we really want to create this as a pedestrian respite in front of our main entrance and all along West Seventy-seventh. And then we'd actually be driving up to the drop-off area that would hide some of our parking and, and really accentuate how, what this arrival sequence is. And then we have two wings to the, to the building then as well that work their way perpendicular to the park so that we have the narrowest end of our building edges facing the park. And then the building steps back and up as it goes further away from the park. So on the east side, for example, we have a building step setback where we're four stories in height. Then it steps up to five stories and then to six stories at West Seventy-seventh. And then the building cascades back down to five and four along the west side. Again, this, this allows for the narrowest part of our building at the park to have the least impediment and impact on the park and the visual sightlines and the pedestrian pathways and so forth. Additionally, we're looking at stepping and cascading the building to create wider and undulating greenways and pedestrian ways and bikeways that will connect West Seventy-seventh to and from the park. This is the bridge that Kurt talked about that we're looking to be able to cross over the creek that here and connect into the bike pathway. We're embracing a lot of outdoor recreational areas within the courtyard. And then again, enhancement of the West Seventy-seventh connection. I will try to move more swiftly through this to leave time for questions from all of you. These are just a series of three-dimensional axons that we think might help just to understand the massing of this project. Again, this top-left axon metric shows the arrival sequence at the front of the building with arrival drop-off, this park-like setting and continued pedestrian way along the front with, with the tallest massing up along West Seventy-seventh. And we're, we'll be looking at how this undulates back and forth along that. And then the building steps down as it travels towards the park. In the foreground here, as well as we look at this being this pedestrian pathway that we want to bring in the idea of pollinator gardens and, and other features that really enhance that pedestrian way. This upper-right axon is just a view from the west, looking northwest, northeast, again, just from the other side. And then the bottom two just show more of the views from the park, again, with the narrow and stepped-down massing closest to the park and then it cascades and then steps and steps up and terraces up toward, as you get to West Seventy-seventh. So that's what these represent. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the plans here, other than the parking is, we're really trying to confine that to below the footprint and up towards West Seventy-seventh in a couple of underground levels. This, this shows the, essentially the first floor of the building where we drive up. We, we're looking at some kind of drop-off element here, main lobby. And then this would open up through to the courtyard side and to the park. And then the surrounding residents are showing in yellow. We do have parking at this level, but that's, it's aligned with.
Uh-oh. Hi Liz, do you think you could get him back?
I will certainly send him an email right now. Everyone, hold tight for a moment, please.
I could just fill in a little bit until Mike comes back here. I'm Jason with Solheim as well, and hopefully Mike will pop back on. But one of the intentional things we were really working with this site was to, to really hide the parking. And that's where we've got topography to blend with the existing topography on the site to hide as much of the parking and play within that shallow water table so that the parking is hidden as the site slopes up to the right-hand side. And that way we can really embrace the park with the two wings of, of housing. I think that, that finishes that slide. Looks like Mike's screen might have frozen as well. And then this, this building can conclude with these slides, but we really intentionally focused to have an urbane face towards Seventy-seventh and have some of the higher building and higher face to engage the street on Seventy-seventh with the arrival court. And then minimize the building massing facing the park so that we really have that porous connection and dialogue with the park and that we can pull the Fred Richards Park into the center courtyard space of the building and blur the line between park and housing and make it really flow together in an organic way.
Jason, I'm not sure if, if we're going to get Mike back or not. Does it make sense for me to just share, share the presentation from my end and we can work through it from there? We're kind of towards the end to get to questions anyway.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a good time to roll into questions and.
I'll throw Mike back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. This is I, and I'm Rava of the Planning Commission. And I guess at this point I would ask if any commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant? I, I see Mike is back. Mike, your, your team kind of kept it going. Are there anything else you wanted to say or?
Yeah, again, I, I'm not sure. Technology is not my friend tonight. I apologize. Just, I, I know you didn't get to see the rest of this. This just illustrates the, the presence at the park and just how we're looking to bury the, the parking as much as possible. We have limitations with groundwater and so we're trying to come up with a creative solution of that by, but also being able to cascade and step the building. So I think with that, I'm just going to let, let you all answer questions or ask your questions. Thank you.
Any commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Why don't you just start, one of you just start and we'll go from there.
This is Joanne. I just had a quick one. I, well, just a quick comment too. I, you know, we, I love the density that you're proposing. I think when we've seen other plans for the north side, they've been kind of lower density and more kind of that urban feel. So I really like what you're doing with this and opening it up and connecting to the park. I think that's great. And having that connection from the street to the park. I guess my comment though is it's a lot of building along the street. It's, it's a lot of length along Seventy-seventh. And I'm just wondering, I know you said that it kind of, there's like a opening into the courtyard, but is there a way to have like a visual or even a, an opening where people can come from the street into the courtyard? I'm, I'm doing my little arrow over your graphic so you can't see what I'm talking about. But, you know, is there a way to open up and have that view from the street to the park?
I'll make a quick comment. The, the building is elevated from the streets, which you can't see in this plan view. So it's a good, you know, fifteen, twenty feet above street level. So to, to actually come up and see through, you'd actually have to drive up that driveway. It's, it's a, you know, it's a drive.
Okay, okay.
And then, and then we're planning open glass lobby space all the way through there. So if you were in a double-decker bus, you could see through to the park. How's that?
Okay.
And I think we wanted to focus on, on connections on either side and then also the, the wings that face the park. Those actually have connector bridges and we'll develop those further. But the idea would be to have that, that cross porosity to get into that courtyard space from the side connectors and the walkway there to make it flow together more with those bridges. It doesn't come through as strongly in these renderings, but we, you know, expect there to be lots of opportunities in there to have different sightlines and connect courtyard to the walkways to the street.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And Mike, are you able to comment on the street facade on Seventy-seventh for us?
Yeah, I think, related to the question, I, I think our goal is to keep that transparent in terms of glazing and so forth. But, you know, there, there are certain elements where we're trying to keep the height up along West Seventy-seventh to create a little more urban approach to West Seventy-seventh. And we need to be able to maintain that connecting of the various wings. So, you know, we'll, we'll look at that. And again, we're, we're not done studying just the massing of this and how, how that, how this, how this facade really relates to West Seventy-seventh. That's part of what will be our exploration over the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Another commissioner, while we have this screen, Jerry, Commissioner Jerry Stross.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just kind of quickly, I mean, I always like to go back to Mick Johnson's Architectural Field Office comments. And that's always, it's always important and good information. And what I think this proposal, this sketch, has hit with what Mick has brought out, and I think it hit is it's based on Seventy-seventh Street. It's connection to the park. And then what would be the, I suppose, the north end, the, how it opens and engages the park. I, I think that's, that's a wonderful aspect of this. So, yeah, and, well, I think in some earlier comments about the parking, I, I don't think that's going to be. I think there's a, certainly a solution to the parking numbers there. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Stross. Other commissioners? Would you like me to just call on you?
Yeah, here, how about me?
Commissioner Miranda, great.
Sure, a few questions. So if I understood the diagrams correctly and from what you said, so the, the front driveway, so to speak, goes uphill. So the front entrance is what, a story above the street's level?
Correct, yes.
Mike, can you show the axon of that for Mr. Miranda to see?
Yes, so just to describe that a little bit. So if West Seventy-seventh is at this point, then this drive is going up about ten feet up to the, really the main entry. And what that also does is bury the parking. We, we have a water table issue and so this allows us to bury most of the parking so that what we really have are the residential, residential units that are exposed. So, so this is that drive that leads up. And then what we're looking at in front of this would be frankly, a, a real strong pedestrian urban placemaking here within this. And we need to develop this. So this isn't developed yet, but we really want to make this pedestrian friendly. This is, this will be the pedestrian sidewalk that'll continue through all the way through here and then creating a wider area in front as we change grade planes to get up to this. creating a wider area in front as we change grade planes to get up to this entry level and then back down to grade. So hopefully that clears up some of that.
Sure. And then so the so the purple entrance to just to the east of that, um, is that the parking ramp that we're seeing from the front?
Uh, that is the upper level parking right here at the moment. And again, we're look, we're gonna be looking at ways to um, you know, make that a strong element and whether we screen that or bury more of that. So that's something that we'll we'll be considering for this particular level, yeah.
Okay, good. I mean, you know, it feels or it seems like it would feel a lot like walking past a big box store or something as opposed to something interesting. Um, and then um, yeah, as Mick said, he, you know, should there be a a path on the west side? Have you guys considered that? Is that something you do?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we've we've already got one there. The I think the question is how big do we make it? How much do we activate it? What do we um landscape it? You know, how do how do we treat landscaping? It's also our guest parking area. So we're trying to figure out the what's the best way to turn it into a, you know, into a more inviting space. So uh, I think naturally it'll be that both the west side and the east side will be ingress points to the park. And then the the pinch point is the bridge, which is over on the east side.
Okay, yeah, I've been walking through a parking lot. It's very inviting to get to a park, but um. And then uh so the so um, I think it was Mike before said you're you still haven't developed the the sidewalk and the, you know, along Seventy Seventh Street because you know, right now, the way it's drawn, just a white line, it's right along the street and and that doesn't seem inviting at all. So um, I think we'd want to see something that um, you know, per mixed comments and per the the uh Southdale um design experience guidelines that Seventy Seventh Street is is you know, street room topology five, which is a boulevard, so it should have a double row of trees there. So um, but if you haven't done that yet, that's that needs to be done. But you know, the yeah, okay, I'll just leave it at that. Um, uh, in terms of questions. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other commissioners, questions or comments?
I'll I'll just um follow on a little bit to what's already been said. Um, one of the things that I do want to particularly comment on is your efforts in success of burying the parking. Um, we know that there's some issues here with the topology and the water. So um, you know, certainly applaud you for doing that. Um, also, you know, really like the affordable housing component. The way it's structured, you know, to kind of interface with the park is great. Um, but then the other side seems like maybe it can use some work and that's already been commented on. I won't repeat that, but um, just echoing what Commissioner um Miranda commented on and some of the others commented on just making it friendlier, more pedestrian uh friendly from the front and increasing the connectivity so that people, you know, walking by there can appreciate that there's a a park on the other side and and be drawn in more instead of just facing this four hundred foot blank wall. Um, so either breaking that up a bit or somehow drawing people in would be a benefit. Um, really appreciate the um sustainable piece of this and how that's integrated into what you do. Um, I think that's really important and and all all the more important as we go forward. Um, and you had mentioned, you know, you're getting rid of a lot of asphalt, which is, you know, obviously a um something to applaud. So overall, um, you know, it's it's a fair start. It's hard to see. Of course, you don't have a lot of details on um, the building or, you know, right now it kind of looks like a big white blob. Um, so we would hope, of course, when you come back, there'd be more um detail and, you know, more more um you know, interesting and and uh friendlier to the pedestrians on the street mainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, let's see who's left. Commissioner Agnew, Commissioner Bennett? Either of you?
Sure, I'll I'll go in. Um, again, I echo everything the other commissioners have said. I won't repeat any of that. Um, I think it would be really great and when you come back as well to see how you're introducing some um sustainability concepts. I at the the one of the proposals that we looked at last week, I had never thought of this. I don't know why, but they had gardens on the roof for residents and I just thought that was the coolest thing. And so, you know, think outside of the box, really think about how we can make this an environmentally friendly, sustainable type um structure that is really looking forward is forward thinking about pushing the needle. Um, I think that would just make this a really standout iconic um development. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll absolutely have gardens on our rooftop. It's uh standard on all of our buildings. So we'll definitely be doing that.
Yeah, and it's.
A bunch of other fun things.
I don't know if you, I mean, maybe you're thinking of the same thing, but it was actually garden plots for the residents. And I was just like, I would have loved that that in other apartments that I've lived at. So thank you for considering that.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Bennett, have you you like to say anything?
Yeah, for sure. I always do, right? So, so I guess first I want to just commend the um the development team for whatever reason, um compared to the last one that was proposed. Uh, and then even the examples, the ones that were prior to that. Uh, your team brings a a different feel toward commitment. And just, I don't know, I I feel a lot better about the future prospect of this, so I'm I'm really excited. And uh, everything you've said is kind of leading us down the right path, in my opinion. So I I look forward to the details as they gel up and I sure hope that they hit the mark. So kind of on the same note as what Commissioner Agnew mentioned, but I think it is worth repeating is the sustainability aspect. Um, don't need to repeat it, but will. I mean, climate change is it's it's affecting the way in which we have to operate our city, how we build infrastructure, how we look to the future. And so you mentioning that from the get go was reassuring and I sincerely trust that you're going to walk the talk. And I expect you to do that by the next time we see you. So really show us the creativity. Um, you know, how do you plan on integrating the water? Like, yes, there are challenges with construction and it acts as a barrier, but with challenges or opportunities. So how are you gonna capitalize on those uniquely toward the site? And I I want to see the specifics next time and I know you'll have them. Um, also, show us your care toward energy conservation. So how can you bring the design and um, you know, passive design as well as the energy production experience you mentioned to the site itself? So um, a lot of times at this point, we'll hear people talk about sustainability and then they come with what they were gonna propose anyways and checklist of the 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 few things that they're gonna do that don't really show that they began with that. So it'd be nice to see that uh more obvious with the next proposal. And then I think most importantly, because this site compared to others, isn't really in a vacuum. Um, where sustainability um really thrives socially and with the connections that this site provides. And I think we'd be foolish to not, you know, stress the importance that this site has to provide access to the Fred. And so how will you make the experience for um us, not just the occupants, so the general public that are going to come to your site? Um, how will you make that experience healthy, safe, accessible and pleasant for anyone using your site, getting to it, passing through it on foot, by bike, et cetera, to basically access and perambulate the Fred? So um, I I just feel like it's so obvious that celebrating that connection and the experience to the park will be imperative to your greater success with the project and make it a long lasting, sustainable result. So um, kind of building on the connections and some of the specifics. I know Lou mentioned them, but it was on my mind too. Um, as it regards the front, um, providing some buffer from the street for whatever sidewalk experience or uh biking experience is there because it does look like it's right on it. And then the sides, as people have mentioned, um, it looks like they're wide paths now, but making them extra wide and not counting on, you know, the neighboring site to to reciprocate sometime down the road. Um, I I we've seen it enough of the times we decide to wait and then it never happens. So we need to pretend that this is going to be the big access point for the indefinite future. So how will you get people from south to north on that east side and make that experience nice? So plenty of like rest stops, benches, um, design along that facade specifically on the east side that brings movement toward the back, whether it's art or just design aspects or water features. And then obviously the park side, I feel like as us, whoever is gonna go there, there's gonna be this element of a reveal. So how do you really celebrate that reveal as you get to the back of the site and you see the park and you see the bridge, et cetera? How do you make that special? That's what I'll be looking for. Um, and I hope in your next proposal, you know, you have those details filled in. I'm really excited. So thank you so much.
Great, great comments. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll we'll do our best to deliver.
Well, this is uh Iain Marov. I think ask a few questions and a few comments. Uh, segueing from Commissioner Bennett's comments, I do think and and several other commissioners, the the pedestrian access from salt to north, I think that's literally what he said verbatim. Um, that will be an important thing. We want them. You know, we don't want the park to be hidden. We want it. We want it somehow people, if they're on the street to feel like uh the park is welcoming them and inviting them. Uh, also uh, coming into tonight's meeting, I was concerned with the long wall. I like the idea that you're talking about the 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 see-through nature. Um, we would like, you know, we when when if the proposal comes before us, we'd like to definitely see that it doesn't feel like a long wall along the street. As several other commissioners said, that the glass could help. Uh, also some of the, you know, uh, I think I think Mick Johnson had some suggestions about how to psychologically improve the feel of that. Um, I had some questions also that I want to go over. Uh, the two thousand, the the denial in two thousand seventeen in just a, that's gonna come up. And just to touch base, there there were what about eight? There were eight factors listed for denial in two thousand seventeen. I just want to touch base with you on those and see how you're addressing them. And I you may have discussed them already. Um, so the first one was green streets, integrated stormwater, pedestrian friendly Seventy Seventh Street, connections from west to east, multimodal connections and shared parking. And so break that up a little bit, you know, the green streets. Well, actually, I'm gonna hold on that one. Integrated stormwater, let's start there because that comes up in the second comment also. Can you discuss how your hand, how you think this proposal is an improvement for stormwater?
So thank you for the comments and I I'll address that first. Just we took the original proposal and it was really a building that was a moat of asphalt surrounding it. So that twenty seventeen just had double loaded parking um all around and high levels of impermeable surface. So we really threw that out and rethought to have as much permeability in the site as possible and return as much of the site, as Kirk said, to nature. And I think that's an incredible way to slow down the stormwater and then we can also develop um ponding and some water features with that. But in particular, pulling the hard surfaces away from the creek and away from the park will improve the water quality on the north side of the site. Um, where it feeds right into the creek, uh, which is completely opposite of the previous proposal that that had that large uh parking route on the back.
Okay, okay. What about some of the other comments? If you just touch on those, I think the stormwater may may have been the larger ones, but green streets, pedestrian friendly Seventy Seventh Street, for example, connections from west to east. Maybe talk, talk, touch on those.
Think by integrating on either side of the site, um, and working with with pathways to build those connections. And I think there's also a really great opportunity to play with the topography, to weave the landscape and building and and park together on the site. And I think create moments, as many commissioners have said, to make the park reveal themselves. And I think we can do that with the unique topography of the site and also preserve some of the existing really large uh current trees there along Seventy Seventh. So I think as we develop that and as we can hide the parking and have Seventy Seventh flow into these pathways um to connect, uh particularly on the east side, I think is a great opportunity to to get those north south connections.
Okay, great. Uh, the third comment was the project does not meet cities affordable housing policy, but I think you've discussed that pretty clearly tonight, haven't you? I mean, you're you're intending the project itself to be enough, almost to be an affordable. Oh, there. Um. Maybe touch, uh, just.
I'll take that.
Once again, on affordable.
Yeah, um, and that wasn't my dog. Um, so we're our rents are probably gonna fall in that naturally occurring affordable range. We're also planning to meet the UDNAP policy. We're, I think we're waiting to hear from you and from city council about where to go with that because there are a number of ways we can address the the affordability policy. One would be to just directly include it in our housing. Two would be to uh pay the fees uh to the housing trust. And and the in between one would be, we have some measure of, you know, half and half or three quarters and one quarter or something like that. I think we're waiting for a little bit of direction, but we're definitely prepared to meet the affordability requirement. And as we said, um, a lot of these units are gonna fall into the range of affordability that's slightly above that affordability requirement as well. Um, so I think the whole building in many ways is just gonna be much more affordable than typical for a lot of the developments that have happened in this part of the city.
Okay, great. Let's see. Um, I'm gonna skip ahead. Let's see, the the project before was was more than a hundred thousand square feet. Now, is this a greater than a hundred thousand square feet?
Yes.
Okay, so it talked about something about reconstructing in two thousand seventeen, reconstruction of Seventy Seventh Street was expected. Uh, maybe this is a question for staff also, uh, but the applicant. How is that part of this project?
Yeah, so that that I believe that master development agreement has gone away as well.
Okay, okay. The fifth item was a prominent gateway along seventy, uh, to an entrance to the park. And I think that you're you're definitely planning that, right? You you just mentioned that a moment ago.
Yeah, and so I I could jump in on that one too. Um, the site that we were looking at back in two thousand seventeen was much bigger and closer toward what we're anticipating as a main entrance into the park. This one is just the just the west five acres. So that that main entrance where we were contemplating relocating the existing to Seventy Seventh, we'd still like to do that. Uh, but probably not that far down to the west that this site is located. But that's not to diminish the importance of making that a connection.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Teague. And then finally, the this is the sixth item, the seventh and eighth item, I don't believe apply. That's the sixth item, talked about inadequate parkway along the north lot line. And I believe that's part of your project, isn't it?
Yeah, so that that's again, part of the PUD that went away, that that was denied. There was a a plan for a parkway. Well, that was the term that was used, but kind of a a shared street through the project.
So that's is that inapplicable then today?
Yeah, we're really looking, we're this, we're starting over.
Okay, well, that's everything then. Thank you. And those are all my comments and questions. Uh, Christian Miranda, do you have additional?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, I keep getting confused with uh sketch plans and how questions and comments come at the same time. So um, a few more comments. Um, I I feel like the front, everything else about it seems fine to me, but the front just really bothers me and it and it just feels very suburban. And I'm comparing it to the the uh Perkins project we looked at last time where that building um probably pretty similarly. probably pretty similarly shaped, sort of a V building. And um, but it was, it was right up along the street, you know, and now this is going to be a boulevard, so it's going to be a little bit further from the street. But um, you know, with this, I'm trying to figure out why the driveway bothered me and I think it's because it feels like an on-ramp. And so because it comes at such an angle, such a shallow angle to the street, it feels like, you know, i- i- if anyone's ever walked on the sidewalk near the entrance to uh, Highway one hundred across from City Hall in Adina, um, you know, you're taking your life in your hands as cars just come along there. Now granted, they're not actually going onto a highway here, but, but um, you know, by having such a shallow angle, you're really not forcing cars to slow down at all. And also by having that shallow angle, you're making the width of street that a pedestrian has to cross fairly wide, right? So it just doesn't feel comfortable for a pedestrian there. So um, what the other project did, the one for the Perkins site, is they had, um, you know, to have a little drop-off area. They, um, it came in, I think at a sharper angle and it was, it didn't go in as far and then it had a little turnaround right there. So rather than going, you know, uh, shallow and long, it was, it was short and just kind of L-shaped. Um, I wonder if you guys could think about something like that that would make it more pedestrian-friendly and, and not feel like you're crossing a on-ramp to a highway. It just, uh, it just, it just doesn't feel right, so.
Sure. That's a, the, uh, those are great comments. Um, we'll absolutely take those to heart and really, really work on that. So I appreciate that very much.
Great, thank you.
Yes, so may, do any other commissioners have comments or questions?
Well, thank you. I, I, I do want to say one thing. This is kind of a new lesson for me is that uh, I, I, I encourage a developer to really think about it. And the reason I'm saying this is because I recently saw, we recently gave some feedback to a different sketch plan I don't think was mentioned. It was a nice project, um, different, completely different than this. Don't take this too far, but um, our goal in giving the feedback is to help achieve a, to help achieve a successful vote uh, when it comes to public hearing. And so just my most recent, you know, maybe I'm just a captive of my most recent experience, but I felt like that most recent project didn't always take all as much of the feedback we gave and tried to tell us why what we were suggesting was already included. And the same thing happened with council and I think that project is going to be, you know, turned down. And I, I don't want any project to get turned down. This, this is a nice project and a nice place. Um, it's one I know we've all wanted to see developed and this is a great concept. So um, I, I, you know, I think, I think the feedback we're giving is, you know, we like it and here's some suggestions and things to think about. And we look forward to seeing you at a, at the public hearing with a nice project. Well, thank you. Thank you. Unless you have any further comments or questions, we thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, Commissioners. I really appreciate it and we recognize that you're not paid. And we're grateful for uh, you sticking around of an evening like this. Not that we all have anything better to do, but we are grateful.
Thank you. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all.
Well, next on the planning commission agenda is correspondence and petitions. And I guess I turn to Community Development Director Teague. Do we have any to deal with?
We do not.
So that takes us to chair and member comments and I ask members, do you have any comments? Commissioner Miranda?
I do today, yes, thank you. Um. Uh, just two things briefly, um, the Paris, the mayor of Paris, you know, we, we like to call our France Avenue the Champ Elyse. Um, and I don't know if what you, if anyone has seen what the mayor of Paris, Mayor Hidalgo, has planned now for it, where they're, you know, reducing car volumes tremendously and making it more pedestrian-friendly and, you know, our Southdale guidelines kind of keep it a highway, you know, and seventy-seventh street here feels, you know, like a highway with it's just pretty green space on either side. So, you know, I mean, we're not Paris. We're not going to do, we don't have the density that they have. We can't do what they do. But um, it's something to consider that, you know, longer term, the evolution of the Southdale guidelines and the Southdale plan that, you know, with climate change happening, we need to rethink that, maybe with, you know, transit going down the center or something. Um, and just the second thing is that I'm reading a book called Metropolis, which is really neat. My partner got it for me. And it's kind of about cities and how they evolve over time that goes back from uh, Ur, Uker, the first couple of cities or whatever, from five thousand years ago up to present day and suburbs and everything. So it's a pretty interesting book. Thank you.
Lou, thank you. Isn't that uh, the Champ Elyse and the Ellipse or the Arc de Triomphe? Aren't they planning to make, to eliminate cars from those streets?
Um, they're making it more like, uh, you know, I mean, not quite a boon-earf, but something where um, cars and pedestrians mix and having benches in the middle and, you know, it's pretty rough plans now from what I understand. But um, you know, and, and having like textured pavement and everything, so cars don't go so fast and. But um, yeah, that's the best I understand from it.
Yeah, they're much ahead of us. Um. Okay, anybody else? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, Lou just jogged a memory of something I was reading recently about, I mean, just the importance of the connection. So you mentioned those roadways that are acting as highways, yet they should be the nice access point for us to get to these nodes, right? And I mean, thinking of how like crosswalks used to be established, just wholeheartedly was based off of if someone was hit and or killed there, you know, and then that would be justification to get something there. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways we as not just commissioners, but as a community can, maybe not just waiting for the city to act, but if we know where we want things like that, we need to just start being vocal about them. So I mean, for instance, I think of living around Granby and just waiting for, you know, the transportation plans, getting older, the frameworks, you know, about a decade old. You know, we're already getting into the like long-range stuff that even the short-term and midterm hasn't happened. Um, yeah, I mean, if we need, we need to just, we need to put pressure on getting the things that we want as a community. And a lot of cities are kind of throwing out the textbooks when, when it comes to planning things around pedestrians and bicycles. Because it's like, if you know an area is valuable, just get the infrastructure around it so people can safely get there. And then just, lastly, just, again, we have this political tailwind on climate action. And I think it's upon us as a commission and us as a city over the next four years to match it with being bold ourselves with addressing it. So that's all, thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah, I, I, I think climate is, is a big issue and um, I was pleased to see announcement by the city this week that they're going to be putting forth a, you know, basically a task force, some ideas of how to address it as a community. And I think that, looking, looking at what they sent out, I thought they had a lot of, it was, it looks like a good plan, at least. You know, like it could, this could be meaningful. And so some of the ideas that we've come up with here, that might be a place we could send them. Um, you know, so maybe we could even hear from that, that work group at some point or that task force or whatever they're calling it, but I agree. Anybody else? Anybody else? Staff comments is next on the agenda. We have staff that wishes to make comments?
Yep, just to update you on the sixty-six hundred, sixty-eight hundred uh, development project that, you know, you recommended unanimously for denial. That was at city council la, at their last meeting and that's the way the vote was headed. It looked like it was headed for a pretty clear five oh denial. Um, the applicant, the mayor gave the applicant the opportunity to withdraw the application. And so that he, they have done that and they, they provided that in writing to staff this week, so that application has been withdrawn. So if they need, if they want to try something else, um, they would start all over again with another sketch plan. So I don't know exactly what they're, uh, what they're planning to do, but uh, that project has been withdrawn. That's all I have.
Feel kind of bad about that. I feel kind of bad that someone goes through two planning, you know, two sketch plan reviews and a couple, a media, a few meetings and goes zero seven, zero five. And, you know, I know Minnesota nice and all that and, but I'm one, you know, I'm in the back of my head, I'm like, what can we do? If we think someone's just not going to get approved, what can we do to help? Give them that information upfront to save everyone time and energy and, or else get something that would be approved. And I don't know if I, I don't, obviously, I don't have a solution and I hate to make any changes based on one, but I feel kind of bad. You know, would have been much better to have a project get approved than to go through all that for something not to be approved. But, you know, and I'm wondering what we can do is surface those things earlier in the process, but just something to think about for now. I don't, that's everything I had. Uh, anyone else? Final going, going on or Commissioner Bennett?
Last thing, I just, you know, I just really appreciate the diversity of thought on this commission and the passion everyone has and commitment everyone has that they bring to our community. I mean, anytime I step back and think about it, I, I really admire everyone uh, that I get to serve with. And I think we're, we should feel blessed. We're part of a special group. And uh, I'm just honored to be a part of it, so thanks for everyone's commitment.
Anything else? So, um, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote? We made it without two significant defects. Could you roll vote for adjournment?
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move to adjourn today's meeting. I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair and I'm Rob.
Aye, thank you. Good night, everyone.